Good, Mayor.
I want to welcome everybody out. This is the Roy City Council Special Work Session, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. The time is now five after seven. We have with us tonight, Councilmember Scadden, Councilmember Jackson, Councilmember Sophie Paul, Councilmember Joe Paul, and we've excused Councilmember Wilson, although she had another commitment. Tonight's topic is specific. We're going to talk about, in this work session, the Roy City Five-Year Strategic Strategy Plan. With that, we're going to kind of team this conversation between three of us. Really encourage a lot of input. What I like to do if I can is I like to begin the conversation, and then, and then we'll pass it on to some other, the other members. You can see the charts. Let's go to the next chart real quick. Thank you, Brittany. Our meeting objectives are pretty clear. I just want to review the timeline again. I want to talk about the major categories. Just a fresh reminder of the six major categories or pillars we have. The discussion will then be looking at the mission statement, the vision statements, the goals and objectives, and tonight's plan then would be as assigned responsibility for the development of action plans. That's the whole purpose, okay, of this discussion. Again, this is work session two. Next chart. As you, as you look at this one, we've completed the work session. We've worked some issues internally to get ready for this session. We're now in the second work session. You can monitor this to see what we plan to do, and then what we plan to do after that. And then we'll go in in the third work session and finalize everything. Okay, chart? Here's the main pillars. Just to remind the community, obviously, community image and pride, economic development vitality, public infrastructure improvements, workforce development, and operational excellence, public transportation enhancements, and environmental stewardship. Chart? Next chart? Thank you. Want to come back to the mission statement. We asked for inputs. We got some inputs back. There was a question that talks about we could try to modify the mission statement. What I'm looking for from you would be is, is that the first one is the one we talked about when we started in this review process. The second one came in. Do you have a preference to either one of these in terms of a mission statement that we will go forward with this strategic strategy plan? Any comments? Okay, hearing none? Anybody want, best way to do is anybody believe we ought to change to the, the alternate or the recommended change mission statement, specifically to enhance the quality of life for our community through planning, leadership, citizen involvement, and quality services? That's on the table. Which one do you like best?
Less than more? I mean, who are we saying, anyway, with the top one, replace it with or? And then add a community with diverse opportunities and citizen cohesiveness as a secondary statement?
Yeah, what, that's another conversation we'll have here in a second. Once we kind of solidify this one, this is adding a vision statement's proposed that a vision statement to the main mission statement.
I have a question about the two. Where did the one in black come from versus the one in red?
Okay, the one in black is the one we had about in our first meeting. That's the one you talked about. This one we kind of walked into. We made a few adjustments to that, particularly adding things. I have to go back and look at that, but that was really the original one. Since then, we sent out a request for the second meeting, and we've asked, it was proposed that we change that a little bit to enhance it to this second one. The question you have in front of you would be is, which one do you prefer?
Because we took out government. The first one said, Roy City Government exists to enhance quality of life for all members of our community through planning, visionary leadership, and providing the highest quality municipal services in an efficient, courteous manner. That's our old one.
That's the one we started with, right? Which one do you prefer?
I like to enhance the quality of life for our community through planning, leadership, citizen involvement, and quality services.
Yeah, so can that be changed to say Roy City exists to enhance?
It could be anything you'd like. Which one do you like? Are you looking for a combination of two?
That's what I was thinking, a combination of two. So I'm okay with the second part, but I, I like the part that says Roy City exists to enhance the quality. And I don't know if that's what your, the thought was, or just chop and replace.
This would chat GPT kicked out for us? Is that what we're saying?
I think Councilmember Wilson.
Well, okay, so let me ask you this. Brody, you and Matt were in class last week. There was a conversation you gave that talked about this term quality of life. Do you want to elaborate maybe something you learned from that class that maybe we can share with our, with our colleagues?
Yeah, we just had a presenter who, his opinion was that the term quality of life in these type of documents is, uh, I'll say silly. He used a more colorful term in that we don't control quality of life. We control the quality of place. We control the things that could enhance the quality of life, but you could live in the perfect place and still not be happy. That has nothing to do with your quality of life. We don't control that for people. So he's there to use quality of place because that's a thing that you can control. I like that.
Roy City exists to enhance a community with diverse opportunities and citizen cohesiveness.
Maybe, again, I'm, I'm more of a-
Planning, visionary leadership, and providing the cause. You know, we could just think that.
Just say to enhance the community.
Yeah. Roy City exist, Roy City
exists.
As a community with diverse opportunities and citizen cohesiveness, I would, to enhance.
I wouldn't even say that.
Yeah, okay.
I would just throw this out too. We're going to have vision statements for each individual.
That's correct.
Like, at some point, like, let's just be succinct and say it, like, a mission statement and a vision statement and six more vision statements?
Yeah.
True. Like, as an attorney, you've tried so many six times, you've probably done it wrong, and you've crossed each other up there. So.
I'm sensing, I'm sensing from the comments that maybe we just not include this vision statement. But you could certainly take a component of this vision statement if you believe that should be in the mission statement. Give it, give us an idea. What do you like? What do you want to do?
Roy City exists to enhance the life of all members of our community. Just take out the quality.
Quality of lives, the life of.
What if you get rid of, to, Roy City exists to enhance the quality of our community?
Through planning, leadership.
Not the quality of life, but the quality of our community.
Say quality of, enhance the life part out.
Yeah. Yeah. So Roy City exists to enhance the quality of our community through planning, leadership, citizen involvement, and quality services.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's make the changes on front of this, and then tie the quality of community as being, okay, rather than life, and you guys become those a mission statement. Okay, Matt, write that down. And when you're up, I'll write the comments down. You got it?
Yep.
Okay, next chart? Okay, this talks about community image. Brody, I think you've, you've got this one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, again, this, what you see in red is a recommended change. It's a recommended change. When there's, when, when there's nothing changed, when you see particularly like a ob, objective, and all we did is put the responsible organization, we just need to agree that the responsible organization on the chart is the one who will develop an action plan. That's all that means. The purpose of this meeting is to get action plans assigned to each one of these objectives. That's what we're here to do tonight. Okay, Brody, you're taking community image.
So with this one, you can see the original one that we kind of hashed out. There's different ones. Basically, it adds the branding component. I'm all about the branding. I guess my question to the group would be, is branding really a community image thing, or is it more of a economic development type marketing campaign?
Marketing? I don't think it needs branding there myself.
Yeah. Does anybody want branding in there or think we should?
Or just leave it to the black?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I say leave it to the black.
To the black.
Okay.
Yeah, because, yeah, branding versus physical appearance, because again, I see physical appearances like a lot of what we're doing with beautification, down nineteen hundred, potentially down to fifty-six hundred, things of that nature.
So you're okay with the vision statement in black as written?
Yep.
Okay. Next chart?
Okay, so I guess maybe we just go objective by objective here, kind of two parts. One, are we okay with the objective as written? And then who should be responsible for drafting the action plan for our next meeting? The parts in red, the, the responsible parties are just kind of suggestions that the mayor and Matt and myself kind of put out there. Maybe some questions if we think someone else needs to do it, or there's a better group or person that should be doing it. Let's discuss that as well.
Yeah, physical appearance of the city, that goes right into like what I was just saying. So beautification committee seems right. Yard of the Month? Beautification Committee or Most Improved Yard, and we give it to Code Enforcement.
The month we thought would be, I don't know, when I, me and Diane talked about, we just thought that would be really hard thing to do monthly.
Would we say this? It's not who's implementing it, it's who's writing it.
Oh, who's writing what the actual, what it is?
Who's getting ready for next meeting?
That's it.
But, but because it was brought up, the question on our objective two, is should we keep that in or remove it?
Or strike it?
Yeah, and your, the conversation now is, do you want to keep it or do you want to remove it? Your call. Objective two.
Because, I mean, when we talk yard of the month, we're only talking four of six months out of the year, but again, it's one of those.
I guess the question is, is that something you want in a five-year strategic plan?
Yeah.
Well, this. No, that's something we could just adopt at a council meeting.
Yeah. Right, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I would say strike objective two.
Is okay with it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, remove.
Same thing, road and trail adoption program. I'm in the park and write, write that up.
You okay with the parks and recs to department to do the road and trail adoption programs?
Yeah, they've done that before.
Yeah, we may own already, so it's just a. Okay?
Objective four then would be the welcome signs spruce up, increase prominence and visibility. Action plan. Who do you want to do that? One, do we want that in there as a, as a main objective, or do we? And if we do, who do I want to write it up?
I mean, where are we thinking we would put more welcome signs that we don't already have welcome signs? Well, I mean, with the exception of the one that we're, yeah, we're, we're trying to replace.
And might I, maybe if I could say, like, welcome signs, but maybe like maybe a broader objective?
Sure.
Like, not just signage, but look for opportunities to, you know, enhance.
Well, so with this being community image, because like when I was discussing with, with Diane, we were talking about our welcome to Roy City signs. You look at other cities, and they actually have something nice around them. We just have dirt and weeds and but I know that they just barely got put in, so I knew that's something we could work on, and they all have flowers around there, but I know we don't have water to those locations. But if we could put, put some colored rocks, like two or three different, you know, designs of rocks or something around them, and then cut back the trees and the shrubs that are by the one, down by the Hanson Farm back in there, just make it look nice instead of just cement and dirt, just there now and weeds. So just put something around it to make it look nicer, but not plant anything. It's disgusting what we're doing, though.
Yeah.
That's in the action plan there.
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess.
So I didn't know of where we need to put that at. You knew the image.
Yeah.
No, I think the idea is in the right place. I guess my question is, what is, what do we want the objective to say? Do we want to be specific to welcome signs in those type of areas?
If it's in red, it's new request. So now the question is, do you want that? If you want to add it, it's there. If you don't, we can take it out. It's new. And then if you want it as written, then do you want the community economic development department to be responsible to write the action plan? That's ready to do questions on objective four.
Maybe a suggestion.
Okay, sorry.
It kind of goes along with objective one.
That's what I was gonna say. Can't that be part of it?
The same.
Yeah.
One.
It feels like it should be passed into that.
To do the action plan, to talk about the signs, to talk about.
Physical, because that's the thing, is that's physical appearance. That's like somebody's first representation of who and what Roy is. And so we have a pretty sign, and we go through, we clean up all the weeds that are around it, but then you go up lockdown and you know, you've got somebody that has a commercial property that has just, their lot is completely and totally overrun. That goes more, I think, into, yeah, improve the physical appearance of the city. So I think, I think you should actually roll that in objective four into objective one.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The same beautification.
Yeah.
Okay, spearhead that.
Okay, roll, go, objective four and objective nine. Perfect. Thank you.
And then objective five again, is that something we want in there? And then are we good with my department essentially to write that up?
Yes, because, correct me if I'm wrong, this was when we talk volunteer groups, where we're not talking about people that needed to do some type of community service?
That would be part of it, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with keeping it in community and economic development. Go back before really quick on welcome signs. I would just use the term signs generally. That way you're not just focusing, because we have all, all kinds of signs.
True.
Right? Commercial signs, yeah.
And it's not even really, I was just thinking the same thing, not even just signs. I mean, there's so many different ways to advertise our city that it doesn't have reasons to find.
I think if we put that back in objective one, and we can just kind of address that with the action plan. But everyone's okay with five?
Yep.
Chart?
So then this would be goal two, enhance recreational amenities. I think the first three we talked about last time, I think we wanted to do, makes sense to me unless anyone differs, the Parks and Rec Department fits that action plan together. Unless anybody feels otherwise or thinks otherwise.
I was just, something that come up, is the pickleball courts have to be where we're going to put them, or can they be farther away from housing? Or is that the only location they can be put?
Far as like George Wallen Park?
Well, yeah, George Wallen Park. I'm just saying, do they have to be? Because, you know, we have that lady, it lives across the street. I don't know if you talked with her about it. We didn't know if they could be moved further over, or if they, that's just the best place that they have to be. I don't know, Ross.
The, the other areas would have the softball, and then the one field is, is for lacrosse and football and things.
So that's closer to the boweries by the. Over there, closer to their own, nothing over there. Or closer to the.
That's a field.
Yeah.
Football field.
It's a football field. I mean, maybe it's like deaf, but I, I walk by the one at Emma Russell almost every evening, and they're out there playing.
And it's so quiet. I have it in my.
Tuned into it, or I'm deaf, but I don't notice a ball.
Sport.
Yeah, George Wallen, like, you're far removed from houses and.
That, well, really, that one would be right across, that lady would be right across the street from it. And so, but.
I can interject, lots of people in West Haven.
Yeah, because there was somebody that sent an email that was.
Yeah, we looked her up on the map. She's directly across the street from where they would be.
What were you saying?
So.
There have been lots of people in West Haven that have complained about their pickleball courts.
Right, enough where my son lives in South Park, and the houses, the houses around there.
Yeah, we put a pickleball court in our HOA, and I, I, I walk past, and I'm, I'm gonna pull Joe Paul. I have no idea. I've never heard sound come from a pickleball court, so let's.
I think, and we don't have lights. You're not putting lights on right now, so it's not going to be a nighttime dark. It's not a, well, yeah, sport.
If that's where it needs to go, then I, that was just a question I had, so.
Okay, so, but everyone's okay with that being in a.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right. So then four and five, these, I'll just say at least makes sense to me how they're written, but does anybody have questions, comments, concerns about either of those?
No, I think those are critical to not get us in the position. We just went through this last.
Yep.
We're almost, we're almost one year down now.
We shut it up.
Okay. We'll have Public Works and myself will coordinate that.
Okay.
Okay. So, again, goal three kind of has an added there with the promote cultural services through enhanced art council activities. I guess the question one is, do you like that? Do you want that in there? Or do we want to leave it more generalized?
I like it in there, and I like what we're doing with the Arts Council. I'd love to see it. Potentially, let's get through this, you know, summer and see how stressful it is, but I definitely think the community loves it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
So when you say responsible party, is, is the Arts Council responsible for writing the action plan?
Yep.
As a representative of the Arts Council?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable writing an action plan for each of those?
Well, yes, March.
March.
Interesting enough, there are two organizations in Roy that are recognized by statute. Planning Commission and Arts Council. Technically, they function. They can use a petition in the city council and ask for special funding to be able to meet the Art Council's objective because they're recognized as an official organization within the city. So, I, you know, I mean, certainly, we can't force the volunteers to do it, but we can certainly enhance that. But there's nobody better on these particular elements to.
No, I agree. I just asking a representative of the Arts Council, are you comfortable writing?
More power, more money is now how you're looking at March?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Concert in the park, is everyone good with that being objective one?
Hundred percent.
Okay, objective two, establish a police, fire, and military commemorative park.
So I think.
We want that as an action.
They, we have to, like, is this just
a plan?
One of those where it's a plan, like, nobody's.
And is that just something?
What do, what do we call Georgie Wallen Park? What it is? Yeah, exactly. I might, we've already established one in the, I'm just gonna call it.
Well, I. Like, what if we decide to do it in front of the city building, or at a park, or Emma Russell?
Or in front of the entrance of, if we ever get another cemetery. You know, we've talked about some type of an armed services or, you know, Bountiful just went through and put that big memorial down there by the city building that fortunately, my dad's name got on there because he was a resident of Roy. He served in the armed.
In the next five years, hopefully, we'll have a cemetery, and then that's something, maybe we get that down there.
Yeah, what were you gonna say, Brody?
I would just say, if that's our idea, I would take out the word park, maybe area.
Area.
Yeah. Park seems. Commemoration, military, yeah, establishment, police, fire, military.
Commemorative memorial?
Yeah, commemorative, yeah.
Again, I, I just kind of think we keep it general.
Park, park is, that's very broad. Oh, hey, why don't we just call the Fifty-six Hundred Project, you know, the park that they're gonna give us?
And then. Just talked about putting something out in front of the city building, out by our sign out there.
There was.
There's different places. I guess my question with this whole thing is, it's a strategic plan. It's not a, I'm gonna make a statement, not a question. It's not a thou shalt. And it's all contingent on if we can come up with a funding and put a plan together. But it's, it's giving people a look and say, hey, these are the things we see important in the next five years, and maybe you transcend it to the next five years.
Because I was wondering.
If you don't have a plan in place, nothing's ever gonna happen.
To have people on there who died in the line of fire or, you know, working, that's what I was wondering if.
Well, it's, it's fire, military.
Yeah, so I didn't know if we, but that would be hard to find all the names, especially military. Somewhere, but yeah. I, I didn't know if that's what it meant to have.
When you have a memorial park, do you enhance it?
We could add to, that's.
All right, keep it.
Keep it, and again, we, we, this is five years, so we have five years.
If it's a general thing we want to work for, we can get down to the details when you have a plan, when we have funding, when we have those types of issues. I would.
I just gonna say, sometimes, like, in the budget process, this can help us identify things that we want to work toward, but also in the budget process, it can identify reasons why we aren't doing some of these things as well with funding and different things as well. So it's just kind of, it's basically planting a seed to see what we can be doing.
Well, and as you have your staff meeting and you, and you look at these in, in your planning sessions, you could say, okay, what are the things that we'd like to bring forth, and can we, where do we find funding? Can we get grants? You know, I think you could probably give military grants. You could probably get, just for that, I mean, there's some of the other stuff on the Arts Council, we've done a great job of doing ramp grants, make sure that there's a way to keep that going forward. Maybe it's not all just out of the general budget, it's getting people to think out of their box and
That's right.
looking for ways.
But the important part about this conversation is, is that if the city council and the senior staff believe this is something we should look at, then it's a green light to go look at options, and the options maybe is what federal grants are available to put these kind of parks and these memorials together. What state funding might be available? And, and ideally, but without some direction from the council to do something, who would ever go out there and take the initiative to make this happen?
Right, yeah.
So if the action plan is written such by the Arts Council, if you agree to that, this says now that opens the door to go look at other options, and it may very well state, it simply states, this simply says, no general funds will be used. So everything has to be either by volunteer or contribution or by grants. Then let's so the action plan state that, and now we got clear direction of what to go after.
As long as it's known that it's not a thou shalt, and you have to provide the city budget for it.
Ultimately, all of this is a general idea that we, staff can work through and kind of have some long-term ideas.
Long-term.
But the budget is what tells us what to do.
Yep.
So I would just say in looking this, I, objective three and four, I would look at either, you know, is the Royal Lion sculpture, is that something we want to do? No?
And that's, and that's the reason why it's up here.
Yeah.
If you think that the Royal Lion sculptures, just, we're just not ready for that. Certainly Ogden has their horses, they have their rumples.
Yeah.
Pepper has the tomatoes.
Pepper has the tomatoes. If we're not ready for that, let's strike that, and then we move on.
And then I would just say too, like, with murals, with murals and that idea, I think that actually might be a good plan. I would, if we're throwing out three, okay, but like, I would maybe merge that to maybe look for some, I don't know how I want to say it, look for some ideas of, I mean, some artistic expressions that would represent the city well.
I like murals if we had any walls to paint them on.
Establish sculptures to represent the city.
Similar, like with Ogden's done with horses, or what are you thinking?
So I don't know.
Yeah, well, I think that's what we're talking about with Royal Lion sculptures, because Roy High, the mascot is lion. And so we were kind of thinking that as the, somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, I've heard in.
It was.
Okay.
I get it now, and I'm like, oh, vandalism.
Yeah, yeah. Murals on the, on the flip side, we could, I mean, you could do seasonal type murals, and we just were talking about bathrooms and things of that nature. You could put murals on the outsides of our restrooms.
You just got to be careful because it promotes a lot of tagging and.
Catch some of these graffiti individuals and help create something of beauty.
So we were at the, in Nashville, they have that all over the place, but then on every corner next to it is a ton of graffiti that I just thought, no, I don't want to promote graffiti.
Well, let's go back to the sculptures.
Yeah.
Do we have a consensus to take it or?
I'm struggling. I don't know.
Well, I, I think, you know, in our roundabout on forty-eight hundred, and maybe if we do another roundabout, we
Yeah, I mean, that.
Continue a theme somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, on there, on the roundabout.
How do we want to articulate?
And maybe we could.
Give me a sentence.
I mean, I'm thinking of something like, we did something metal, like on the new six thousand roundabout, that was royal like that, but I'm just visualizing a, a lion like.
Take out Royal Lion and just do established sculptures, and that opens up.
That goes back to what Marge was saying, yeah.
Yeah, it opens up the door to whatever.
And then we could get with the Roy High welding class and they could make sculptures, I don't know, just.
About who made the last two events?
Yeah, pretty, it's got a brand new welding feature, yeah.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, cause it's.
So if we said, if we put objectives three and four together instead, establish sculptures and murals throughout the city?
Yeah.
And making it from planning.
Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Cause then again, we can always dive into the details when these projects come up and we can hash out who likes what and who can weld what.
Okay. Sculptures, murals, flags.
It's just that it's so hard to do anything nowadays without some of them analyzing.
Um, okay, any issues or problems with objective five?
No, love those so far. First one.
Can we give you two more?
Two more? I mean.
Go for March. These are the new ones, right here, so if we add anything, uh, let's bring them up in, after this, uh, next.
Couple more objectives?
I, I have no qualms, go, yeah, as I say, what, what are you thinking?
Well, we, we really would like to consider having a Roy band that would play at community events and different things, so.
The high school band?
No.
No, like.
Tell, city has that band in all their grades.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the other thing, and I didn't get to talk with Jolene in detail about this, but she really would like to see us move toward having a community live theater plays and productions.
And like Washington Terrace?
Uh, well, and or Clearfield and or Leighton and or pretty much.
And where?
Well, and those you've had big donors, I mean.
Yeah.
At Kenley Amp Theater in Leighton.
Well, she just said, just.
Yeah, just, well.
They have a Roy High, you know, theater department that puts on all their plays.
Yeah. It's a bit more like in the summer, talking, and we could use the same library facilities we're using for concerts in the park.
Or do a venture between the two and maybe expand it out into extra space or George Wallen Park.
I mean, I think the band, if you could get enough people to do a band and then maybe they could do a little few songs at the lighting ceremony and then it, you know, the Roy days.
Yeah.
They do something, I mean, there's a few times that they could perform, I, the theater thing would be, I mean, if Jolene wants to tackle that.
If there's anybody that can tackle it, it's Jolene.
I guess again, as we look at this being a five-year plan, like, is that an objective you want in the five-year plan, and if so, how do you wanna say it? Like, I, I think it's a great idea, just probably fits here, but what is the objective? Is it specific to creating a band and doing these specific projects, or is that part of some of the other?
Overall, I, I think you work in, I mean, yeah, I think you combine and do those.
Cause like, to me, if you're doing concert in the park, you could.
You could implement.
Art displays or contests, you could have that as part of the action plan.
Right.
I just, it would bring the community together more because you would be involving particular people in the community.
I mean, I think you can fit it in there, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I'd love, cause I, I, I know a lot of old Roy High band kids that would love to probably perform in something like that.
What do you wanna do? So, I guess, do we want a new objective, or do we wanna work that into the action plans?
I'm just working in.
I would suggest working it in because it's becoming. Concert in the park, just like the, the only one that's like the outlier is the, is the theater in the parks or whatever we're gonna call it, we could even, yeah.
But if you're talking, I mean, you could put that in, art displays or contests, you can work that into any of these objectives as, if that's what we wanna look at, yeah.
If Diane was here, I know she would be all over like the.
So you're removing the, the Royal Lion sculpture?
Royal, yeah, we, we combine the Royal Lion sculpture.
And then you're doing, defining part, so, okay.
I'm sure we have a clear, uh, live theater solution yet, or is that gonna be?
Well, I think that Jolene's gonna have to maybe come up with a plan for that because she's gonna have to.
What objective do you wanna put, you wanna create a s- objective six, or do you wanna create somewhere else?
I think that would probably be part of the action plan, like concert in the park, right?
Yes.
And we, we can expand concert in the park to.
And theater.
Yeah, concert and.
Community band and.
Yeah.
Community band and theater.
Community, yeah.
Okay.
Put that in there.
Yeah.
Actually, yeah, you can, you can.
Okay.
In culture, yeah, cultural. Directive, cultural events in the park.
Or wherever we can find it to happen.
Cultural events where we can find, that's right. Where Zodin will allow.
Not next to someone's house.
Well, this one is all brand new, so. Uh, again, I, I think the branding is more of an economic development issue, um, but I'll hear from y'all and tell me if I'm wrong, right? In the middle?
Okay, so, implementing branding in Roy City, I've always, I've always struggled with this, um, cause I definitely think we do need to have something that brands us, and maybe it's not even necessarily brands us, but it's like, in my line of work, we call it a one-pager, it's like, if I'm a new business, why do I wanna come to Roy City, right? What are our demographics? Why, you know, what's our collective purchasing power? Anybody know, like, just off the top of their heads, based upon the last census, what the total aggregate, like, purchasing power of every household in Roy is? Anybody? The answer is one point two billion dollars, that's how much, um, the aggregate households across all of Roy actually have that they can take and pump into the local community. And just those types of like little tidbits of information, that's what I think of when I think of branding, and something that we could take and potentially provide, um, to any potential like business. I, and I don't know necessarily, like I said, I'm just.
So, again, and, yeah, it's like I'm beating a dead horse, through the five-year plan, right, like, we could get into create, how we create it, and that's really what we're gonna work on.
Right.
But is this the appropriate place for it? Is that what you want to see in the next five years? Cause I'll be honest, to say that this is community image cohesionness and pride, to me, does not make sense, but maybe I just missed the boat. If this is something you wanna do, it probably should be an economic development pillar.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then again, the action plan we can go into, do we wanna create a marketing theme? Do we need to get consultants? Do we need to create flyers? How do we do that? We can work through all that.
Well, I, I understand, uh, cause I know Diane wrote this, cause I was talking with her about this, things that bring people to Roy.
Sure.
Like the complex, the aquatic center, the Hill Air Force Base, the burger bar, we were just naming things that bring people to Roy, and I guess the Christmas lights too, but I don't know, um, if it needs, you know, really needs to be in five years.
Well, I, I think a lot of this stuff just needs to go on the website. About what we have, what, do a little bit of website, and, and then maybe, um, do some search engine, you know, I don't.
Yo, search engine optimization.
Yeah, search engine optimization, so if people Google.
So, I would just say this, if you go down, goal three of our economic development strategy plan is market key areas for commercial growth.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, or, there's other things like that.
We could put this maybe over in the goal three or market key areas for.
Yeah, I have already, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we actually addressed it. So are we, so here, where are we looking to strike? Goal four, implementing branding of Roy City, I don't think it belongs under the community image cohesionness and pride.
Okay, so with that comment, do we wanna take goal four out of this particular?
Yeah, maybe relocate it and, and specifically to your economic development.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, then we strike, uh, objective four, we can try to figure out branding inside the marketing.
Yeah, and I think we can change the goal three pretty easy to include that, so.
Okay.
While we get there.
So what about the next one? Objective five.
Goal five.
Goal five, or objective two?
Excuse me, go five.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to, I guess my question to this would be, is this something for the next five years the staff should focus on? As far as like volunteerism?
That's what it is.
Are we, I mean, I, when we, when we say volunteerism, are we looking for multiple days of service? I'm like, like the day of service that we have coming up?
Or the action plan?
Yeah.
If you believe, if you believe facilitated volunteerism in the city, writing different projects.
Sure.
Then what I would look for, it says, is the community economic development department the best one to write the action plan, and then what's in the action plan that's gonna help achieve the objective?
Yeah.
And I would say, that might be where you can insert some different ideas of how you see you want that volunteerism, but i- if you believe that's the case, remember, he's got, he's got, or what Brody's talking about, is you got volunteerism on Roy days, you got volunteers on citywide projects, and you got, uh, in essence, volunteers in terms of just facilitating, uh, volunteer efforts, wherever that may be, so whatever would be on what we talked about in objective one and objective two, that would be objective three.
Could it be under like workforce and development?
No, cause that's more of our workforce and development for our actual staff.
It's okay about.
It's fine here.
Because cohesion is, does talk about bringing the community together.
Correct.
The question is, is that, is it, could you, do you like encouraging and facilitating volun- volunteerism as a goal?
Yes.
If you do, perfect, but could you consolidate into one objective, everything that's in those three?
Pretty much.
And maybe you keep the goal and you only have one objective, and that is to look at citywide projects, to include Roy days and planning and execution and anything else where you have volunteer opportunities.
I say combine the three of them.
Into one.
Into one, yeah.
But then the thing that you have there is you have the splitting, cause you have community economic development owning broader volunteerism, Parks and Rec owning volunteerism for Roy days. Agreed, and that's like.
I don't see that as a problem because.
You don't, okay, as long as you don't, I was.
We're creating an action plan and spending, you know, we're gonna spend time to try and implement this, we're gonna work.
Cause, cause, well, and I guess.
I mean, I think about things that, like, my son's about ready to do it, he's gonna approach somebody from Parks and Rec and say, what do you need for an Eagle Scout project? So, that could be a part of that, and it could be, just because it's listed under one or the other, doesn't mean it can't be a joint effort.
Right, good, only thing we're talking about is who's writing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the only thing.
And so in the action plan, you can still tag Parks and Rec for ownership of the.
Parks and Rec is gonna do da-da-da-da-da.
Okay.
Community department's gonna do da-da-da-da-da.
I mean, there is part of me that says, I don't want to, writing all these action plans being noose around somebody's neck that we can't get, I mean, yes, we do need to move these forward, but we need to do it in a simple and effective manner, and not turn it into something that's gonna keep somebody from doing the biggest part of their job.
Yeah.
Well, part of their job is to be doing, I mean, if they don't have time.
Like, how long are you tech, like?
I think that's what my concern is, is how big are these action plans gonna be?
Well, it, it could be a paragraph, yeah, like basically two paragraphs. In, in, and that's the thing, is when we, the, the, the action plan can be one or two paragraphs, it's the backend that we're not taking into consideration, is how do we coordinate the volunteerism? Who has the most appropriate staff, which to take and coordinate that, cause when I look at community and economic development, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but there are three, four people in that department, uh, Parks and Rec has. Okay, and so I'm just saying, i- i- as far as like the most resources, um, I think, again, as long as we're all under the, um, notion that community and economic development will set forth the action plan with the ability to task different departments with the different levels of volunteerism, I'm fine with rolling it all under community and economic development.
It, it, and it could very well be the action plan will break that out and they would look for that, but I, I would say you come to the administrative, uh, portion of Roy City, city manager, and between the city manager and the department heads and the mayor, they figure out where best to focus at, and the secret would be is, if you say goal five, for an example, we ought to consolidate those three objectives into one, and then allow the community economic development department to basically generate the action plan that encompasses all those, we can find whatever resources within the city to make that happen. Yeah, secret here is, when it's all said and done, you will review that action plan, you will feel comfortable about the action plan, and then you will approve the strategic strategy plan, and that's a city council responsibility. After you've gone through it and asked all the questions, and really, unless you all tell me something different, you'll see this on the last two pages, we're not asking for an action plan until the end of June.
Yeah.
So we got months, okay, for us to work through these, once you, you decide, yes, that should be kept. And the reason for that is.
Budgets coming through and that, I.
You got the budget.
They're done with that.
We can certainly amend the budget, but the concern I've got right now is, we gotta get you guys to approve the budget, and you may see something in here that you may prompt, prompt you to say, I'd like to see if we can do something within this budget, but I, I gotta be realistic here and suggest is, as much as it would have been beneficial, and Matt and I talked about this, to have this done before you got into the budget cycle, we lost six weeks, uh, there were some things we, you guys had, we couldn't get this done, and as a result of that, we now have to push this back and get the budget done, which is absolutely critical, and then weave this in here so we get a document you can live with.
Yeah, so, all right, let's collapse goal five, all three objectives into one, and put it under community and economic development.
You guys okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Excellent, Brittany. So here we are, uh, I think we talked, um, we talked through all of these last time, um, unless anybody has problems with this goal and objectives, uh, let me know, I think obviously it makes sense that my department handled the action plan for these, and let anybody. Want to volunteer again?
All yours.
Anybody have a problem?
Keep going.
Okay, anybody have a problem with any of these? I think they're pretty straightforward, and they, a lot of this mirrors too, the already passed economic development.
Exactly, yeah, what we've already established.
Yep. Um, same here with goal two, I believe we talked about, um, both of those, and again, uh, goal three are in line with that. Uh, goal three, uh, market key areas for research growth, growth, I would maybe say based on our, um, our discussion there, we add an objective, market key areas for commercial growth and I don't know, say something else, we.
Bro, yeah, broadly Roy, it's like, yeah.
And market Roy.
Roy.
Something like that.
Yeah, and make it a broad statement.
We could even put like another objective of, of marketing, if we wanted to add that back in.
Perfect.
You okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, go for, actually, as I look at it.
Yeah, this is just modernized.
Yeah.
Yeah, drive efficiencies.
Education and training, like, what's that, what's that?
You just went through it, you wanna talk what education and training needs from the economic.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I think where it is is kind of interesting, but the education and training would be two ways, it would be with our, mostly with our staff, and, you know, uh, and then also our processes, so are we using, you know, are we using Manila folders? Or are we actually typing documents and saving them as PDFs, simple examples, things like that, and then also too, um, you know, education and training for staff members specifically, and then also education and training for the elected officials who make all the decisions. You know, I, I can use an example real quick about that, in our, in our plan, there was a gal who worked for retail strategies, I think was her name, and she does retail lots, uh, basically space analysis for these companies, and there was a, a sweet, sweet individual who worked, it was in a little county in Tennessee, uh, the entire population was like eight thousand, she's like, well, we just want a Chick-fil-A or a Zaxby's, and the lady was like really nice, she was like, you don't even have twenty percent of the population necessary, so move on, find a different goal.
It's like when people keep saying, we wanna trade her chosen right, come on, let's get realistic.
So things like that would be, so if we're okay with that.
Um, you're not going to get a Costco, you're not going to get a Samsung.
And this is talking about kind of those internal things, like, what we work on, what we do, and, and how that goes forward. So everyone okay with that?
Yeah. Well.
Okay.
Now, the keep and remove on goal five was recommended because they believed that the cleanup of commercial centers was actually accommodated in our, in our first one. So the question is, should we keep, uh, the cleanup and objective use code enforcement to help us do that? Or you believe that's already accounted for in our first goal?
I would almost say move goal five under like objective one for code enforcement, because that's effectively what code enforcement does. Yeah.
My, my. I think personally, my opinion, objective five is covered in the community.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And we can just make it part of the action.
So we want to put it?
Strike it?
For moving. Where?
Well, I think it's already kind of covered in the, the cleanup and modernized.
Of the very beginning.
Of the other pillar.
I mean, and you could put that as an action, as part of that, is to clean up commercial centers and the overall aesthetics of this.
I think we've, we've already established kind of that code enforcement is a process of the, the cleanup process. So we'll just work that into our action plan.
Yeah, so we're moving, yeah. Perfect.
Goal six, I think we talked about this quite a bit, um, last time. Again, I think this falls in line with our simplified economic development plan. There are just people that, you know, jobs come in to do specific tools. I think having Rob there a few weeks ago was a good example of that, when we needed someone with that expertise, they can come in and help us out. Oh, seven, uh, Mayor, I can kind of take this, but I think this is kind of your.
Let's talk about this, uh. This one talks about the Volpe and Ogden Airport compatibility plan. The fact of the matter is, is that, is that some of us in this room understand what's coming. And when, when the city council changes, and we change every two year possibly, the real issue is going to be is we got to keep on task with this. This, this is an issue that I can show you the charts in that twenty-five to twenty-eight, and then again, from thirty, about thirty to thirty-five, there are some real serious issues coming about as a result of what, um, Ogden Airport has planned that involves Roy City specific. And, and all we, what we don't want to do is we don't want to lose that connectivity. There are some things we need to do. So the five-year strategic strategy plan's purpose then, in reference to this, is to move us closer as a team with Ogden City in terms of how we can both benefit from the Ogden Airport, rather than the proposed strategy that's unfolding right now, which says, uh, they want to take Roy City, big pieces of Roy City. I promise you, if objective two comes to fruition, and they put a thousand-foot runway on that runway right there that's on the southwest corner of Roy, that runway, because of the runway protection zone laws under FAA, will wipe out, okay, a whole lot of residential units, a lot of business units, they're going to, it'll just wipe them out, two churches, three churches. It cannot, it cannot be there under what's called runway protection zone by law. Very, very expensive. So we need to look at alternatives, we need to look at a plan, and we need to address that as a plan.
Well, I think one of the things that we need to put into our action plan is continue to work with the leaders of Ogden, because the outgoing leader who's not running again has a vision, but I've talked to a couple of the candidates, and they don't share the same vision.
Exactly. Which is why objective three is a critical component to this, which has established those business development partnerships with Ogden City about how we can jointly make this work between us. So are you okay with these pressing forward? We'll get these developed, you'll see them. But the important part would be is, is that we believe, at least from developing a Ogden Airport compatibility plan, we can look at ways by which we can work together, okay? And that's what we want to do. I certainly can help write these, I'm, I'm ready and able to do that. I certainly will work with the community development director to work this one, because this is an economic development component. And this one, interesting enough, is that particular one, objective four, is actually driven by statute. Uh, under House Bill two oh six, it specifically has stated that we basically have to develop this particular overlay zone to be compliant with the law. And we have a death, drop dead date, I believe is twenty twenty-five to get this done. So that's a planning commission function, and we can certainly start an action plan to get them on that. Are you okay with everything we've talked about here?
Do we? Yeah, we want staff to write the action plan rather than planning commission.
Well, I, here's the way I'd approach it. Staff will ultimately do that, but planning commission has the responsibility.
To, to, to implement the action, but I don't think they have to.
You're right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it's, it's going to be a staff planning commission.
I would just say task me with writing it. And hotels, because essentially, we would bring it to planning commission, we have to do this.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Is everybody okay with that? Chart? Let's finish, uh, the thought process. Okay, if you look at this particular next chart, this one deals with Hill Air Force Base. Interesting enough, another bill that was approved this year, my heavens, they just hammered us left and right. I can pull them up and share with everyone these bills. It talks about that we have to develop and be part of what's called the compatible use plan with Hill Air Force Base by statute. Now, luckily, and counsel, let me just make this clear, you approved, Matt, fifteen thousand dollars, I believe, to help pay for the Hill Air Force Base compatibility plan that was generated with all of the cities around Hill Air Force Base. And you helped pay for that plan, it is active, it is approved. The only thing that's in that plan that has not been finished, to be very honest with you, is keep components of that that have to be approved by the city council. And here they are. Okay? There's a requirement in there to open up communication lines between Roy City and, and Hill Air Force Base. It's in the plan, you paid for it. Interesting enough, there is an issue in there, they're asking for the cities all within this plan to start talking about having impacts of solar panels will have on inbound aircraft. It's in there, okay? I can give you the documents that big, that's what you paid for. There's a requirement in there that talks about housing. One of the biggest challenges that Hill Air Force Base has is they mobilize their, their group of people coming in and leaving, is they do not have enough housing on the base and depend heavily in terms of surrounding housing. The challenge they got, and this is a congressional issue we don't control, but the bottom line is going to be this, there are just not enough housing. And then they have asked every city in this compatibility use plan to help them look at strategies of how we can help find housing for their airmen and their families. It's in there. So what it comes down to is, if you're okay with this, we'll go ahead and draft up the plans to help make this happen. But this particular one, they would, they were asking, maybe we can rewrite this objective a little bit differently and exclude some pieces and, and use this one, and that, and either one fits. So here's the question. Are you okay with the objective three as written, or do you think this alternative is a good option? Which one do you like best? Which one fits for you?
If we, would we be ceding any type of control if we aligned it with strategies with Hill Air Force Base, or you just use that as kind of a guiding light, so to speak?
It, it would definitely be a communication, uh, communication effort between Hill Air Force Base and Roy City in terms of how we can address their housing issues, to open that door. Be honest with you, Randy, we've never talked to Hill Air Force Base about that. And they're asking for our help. They are asking us as a municipality, along with Leighton, Case, I mean, you can go down the list, that says, hey, can you help us? They got a big demand, and, and I will tell you, if there's a way by which the cities can help them, they can fill their needs, then these airmen coming into our communities, and they got to go somewhere, they got to live for two or three years, then they can oftentimes help them to make that transition into, uh, to apartments or houses, or however they want to do it. But right now, there is no communication, and the plan as it sits right now, the Hill Air Force Base compatible plans, they're asking if in fact we can help them to do that. What, what, if you agree to this, what I will do is I will go to see what they're looking for, and I'll write an ac- an action plan that covers this need. But here's my question, are you okay with the existing, or would you like to change it to the option? Any preference? Please.
I just have a question from a former military background. What is Hill doing to mitigate housing on base?
Yeah.
They don't have near the hurdles that we have, and if they're expanding programs and they're bringing in additional listed folks, why is the onus on us to provide them housing? Why are they not doing it?
And that's a great question, and there's two pieces to that, chief, and I think it's a good question, and maybe we can answer. First, they just run out of space. All those brand-new homes and stuff they have up there, they have, do, do have barracks, they have BAQs, they have those things, little apartment houses, but they don't have anywhere in there the volume, okay, to be able to house it. And, and by the way, they put all of those houses up there under a contractor, and the contractor now manages those for the Air Force. Part two is, one of the biggest challenges they have is, they don't pay them the per diem, bad word. They don't pay them, what's the term?
No, it's not statement. Their, their, their FHJ, VHA goes down if they live on base, they make more if they live off base.
Yeah, and they don't get the funding to be able to do that, because the high price of renting now in the local economy is actually, they're set to a, they're supposed to be set to a local area assessment. But the fact of the matter is, Congress has to approve that, and they just haven't approved it. So we're seeing a lot of airmen coming into the communities because they can't house them on base, and they're not getting enough money to pay for the house that they're renting in. Now, we can't fix that. We don't fix that as a municipality, and we certainly can't fix that for the Air Force. But their challenge is going to be is they got to give them, they got to give the airmen enough money to, where they can rent downtown. And right now, that's, we can't fix that for them.
And Woodbury will be too expensive for them.
Well, is, yeah, because that's the thing is, because does modern income housing not account for military? Again, it, it, it shouldn't, it shouldn't.
Yeah, and, and Woodbury's thinking process would be is the sum of that, but they're talking about a high-end rental program. It's going to exclude that, they're targeting actually Lockheed Martin or Northrop Grumman.
Yeah. So, so same, same with, chief, when, um, objective three, you need to keep it basic, you go too much detail into three, into the previous one. The one in black is, is, is too much detail. With the privatized housing system that they have up there, um, basically, you're, you're just going to, it's not, there's not much influence you can give, but you can give them options and let's see what they have. So keep your objective basic, that first one's way too, way too into the weeds.
Okay, so, it's a good comment, this one may be a little easier to work with as an objective, we just go to the option, you okay with that?
And that, that privatized housing, that isn't owned by Hill Air Force Base, that, they actually signed that over. So if they can move the fence, they would move the fence.
The fence.
Because that is actually community, it's outside of the government. Even the, there's limited capability you can do as emergency services up there as well, just because it's privatized.
Because the privatization contracts have pushed that out, yeah.
So it's just a gate separation between it is all it is right now, so really, it should be outside the fence, and that's what they're trying to get to, so.
Good comment. Okay, we'll go forward, next chart, we're going to touch a couple of the things. Uh, objective four talks about review land and airspace competition, uh, issues and strategies. Uh, this one deals with drones. Uh, it's been recommended that we take that out, I will indicate to you, it is in the compatibility plan. They are strongly concerned about, uh, individuals having drones, okay, and sucking drones in an aircraft fuselage. That one's a hard one, because on the surface, the argument would be, well, federal government needs to address that. We're in no position to address that. I don't know if that's the answer that we can live with, and more importantly, I'm not so sure they could live with that. I don't think they have the resource to do that, they certainly have some federal laws that govern this, but they are really looking for the, the municipalities to try to figure out a way to deal with drone activities. And they are everywhere, everywhere. And, and you've got interesting thing about Roy, is you've got three airspaces we have to deal with. We have the general aviation going into Ogden, we've got the military aviation that's coming into Hill, and you've got the commercial aviation that's driving into Salt Lake International. And so if you look at stacking in terms of airspace above Roy, they're stacked. And you put a drone or something in the middle of that, it creates some interesting problems. I know, by the way, if you know where the technology's going, the technology is actually going, and, and it's even in a bill that I just read that come out, the technology is going in, you want to get a ride to Salt Lake International Airport? Jump on that electric, uh, uh, vehicle. It's a UAV, okay? You get in, three of you get in, four of you, however it may be, and they just have electric motors, fans on them, and they just fly you down. Fly down the I fifteen corridor, drop into the airport, you're there. Uh, it's just crazy where this is going, all this limited airspace, chief.
I don't know how specific you'd need, or if you need to get specific to drones, couple of things. If there's an issue with the drone off base, Hill Air Force Base or Ogden Towers, typically calling us. The other thing is too, is the older drones, if any still exist, are really the only ones that are capable of being flown around here. Um, a lot of the drones that are available now on the market are, they come locked, and they can't be flown in this area. Um, and I think between now and twenty twenty-five, I think in twenty twenty-five, anything that's going to be manufactured actually has to come with a remote ID broadcaster. And so not only will it not be able to be flown, if somehow they're able to override it and get it in the air, uh, remote ID will be broadcast to the tower, and they'll be able to figure out who not only was launching that, but where it was being launched from. So the state code is typically referring to federal code, and federal code is requiring manufacturers to do all these things. I don't know from a municipal standpoint that you really need to get in the weeds when it comes to drones.
Well, let's go back to the question. This one was requesting to keep or remove, what would you like to do?
Remove, just strike it?
Remove.
Take it out?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, objective, this one talks about strategy, there are, they talk about the impacts of aircraft operations. This is obviously the land use issues. And this one gets a little more complicated. Okay. I, I, I will tell you, these ones start to get a little mixed right here, because one of the things, we don't see as much of it, because most aircraft launching out of Hill Air Force Base goes south. Uh, we only got to launch north and south out of Hill. But if you lived in Leighton, and some of you may know people who live in Leighton, uh, they definitely get noise. They get a lot of noise. And, uh, and when the, if F thirty-five, which is one of the most noisiest aircraft I've ever seen and heard, uh, when they put a launch out through there, it gets a lot of noise. There's no medium by which they're doing that. What Hill Air Force Base is asking is to set up ways by which we can communicate, okay, noise concern. And so, uh, this one, this one's going to be a combination of a couple of things, both objective five and objective six, that deals with these land use issues, where you build your buildings and some of that, and definitely the noise. I will tell you, um, and chief, you might remember this one, there's a bill that got approved this year that says that if you're within one mile of the base, not the runway, but the base, you have to put an overlay over the top of the city that's going to talk to the issues about building codes, heights, a variety of issues in the law. Now, um, they're even recommending in the Utah code that was approved, that you build, you put in your building codes a capability by which you can help reduce the noise level within the building, within the house, because of the military operations. It's in there. Uh, even to the point of vibrations, I mean, read the code, it was pretty, pretty elaborate. My point to the issue would be, it's in the law. So let me offer this thought. Let's flush out the plan. Before you approve the final strategic strategy plan, read the plan, the action plan, and as long as it's, it, it satisfies the requirements on the new law that just published, then I think we can go ahead and keep it there. If it, if it steps outside the boundaries. Then I think we can go ahead and keep it there. If it if it steps outside the boundaries, we'll change it and bring it back into, so we keep something we can work with. But there were specific laws passed in the legislature this last session. That specifically talks about Ogden Airport and specifically talks about Hill Air Force Base. And by the way. The Utah test and training range, not an issue here. But definitely, you may not know what's going on at the, what they call the Little Mountain Complex out there on Twelfth Street. But there's a. There's a requirement out there too. Within a mile of that base. You have some very restrictions, requirements uh that they're asking, that's now under the Utah code. So if you're okay, we'll flush all that out and then worth these and come back and see if this is gonna work for you. Fair enough? Okay, fine there, Keith. There's a provision, chiefs, okay? And we're already there, but we don't know the extent of where we're there. That talks about also providing strategies to formalize emergency services to Hill. I know the fire department has them. We can deploy in to provide support. We can certainly, yeah, we've seen. Fire trucks from Hill Air Force Base in Roy City under emergencies. I can't speak how it is in terms of the police department. That's one I've not seen.
The law enforcement is as needed, they'll actually dispatch us up on base.
Okay.
Um, if there's an issue that they want resolved up on base, they'll just actually push whoever it is off base. So there's really no formal agreement cuz it's as needed. Um, but we do have a formal agreement with M I T A. And so that would just, we would just review that as the contract comes up.
Let me do this before we basically make a final decision on objective seven. Let me carve out and send to both of you, if you're okay. What the competitive use, the C U P plan actually is asking the municipalities. Read that.
So I I'm I'm aware of it, Mayor, and we, we're already ahead of that. And and one hundred percent need it already on the fire emergency service.
On the fire side, yeah. There are, uh, they're definitely asking the same requirement on the police.
I believe the police based off of the current agreements and the way they dispatch are are pretty dang close, if not there as well, so.
Just read it because ultimately, the the process right here is this. Is that they want everybody, they want all the municipalities who signed up on this competitive use fund to be compliant to these requirements. And we may be already there. And so the action item was more about just making sure as an action plan that we're compliant. If we say we're compliant. We felt we filled the requirement.
It falls under the old. Defense of support, civil authorities used to be the military support, but it's defense support. And they they revamped that whole thing and for the most part, they want us working on the same page. Both on and off to include training opportunities, things like that. So uh, for the most part, we're we're there.
We're there, okay.
As part of L E Services, I think they actually have a formal contract with Davis County Sheriff's Office. They don't necessarily have one with us. Again, it's just as needed.
It's access, it's access issues, that's why.
I I'll send you the, what the C U P basically requires, let you look at it. If you think we're there. You may come back and recommend that uh, objective seven just be removed. But if there's things we need to put into play to keep that and to bond that or bond it stronger. Or do something different, then we can sort of keep it on the game. You okay with that? Okay, chart.
Okay, uh. The next pillar.
You have that one, right?
Yep. Our next pillar is public, public infrastructure maintenance and capital improvements. There's only two objectives here. We've already reviewed. These objectives, um, there's a couple of items that we need to choose to to keep or remove. Um, but uh, with the two objectives, it's not to minimize the importance of this pillar because it's actually worth more than the money. And assets go, so. Um, the first objective or the first goal is replacing aging infrastructure. As you know, we have a lot of that, um, being the age of our city, so. Um, first objective I find being very important of creating a baseline of where we're at. Um, mainly, this is not just the public works, but the public works is the bulk of it, but there's other departments. That uh, do have assets that we do need to evaluate. Um. Any questions with that?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, objective two, replace aging recreation amenities in our parks. Again, very costly, general fund money, not utility enterprise money. Um, but all of those are coming due. We did have an a sa- a safety evaluation to go through the parks and a lot of those do need to be replaced. We had to remove some things. From there, so. Any objectives, objections with those?
So that's like including Roy West Park one day.
Yeah, Roy West, everything, uh, newest parks, George Wallen, everything else out there. Um, I think it probably would be a really good idea to add slash Aquatic Center thing, so. Parks from the objective. Okay, that's a good idea.
I agree, so that includes everything.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the next two, two objectives, uh. They do come in through our transportation plan as well. One of them, we are in process. Of completion, uh, the six thousand south thirty one hundred west. Uh, but there's an additional one of around about six thousand south forty three hundred west, which we applied for a grant. Uh, we did not receive said grant, but we can con- continue to do so. It is a, we have identified it in our transportation plan. Plan as an area that we need. That is a, that's where we also get a lot of the comments from city council, so. Any ideas or objections with those?
No.
Okay. Goal number two, develop capital facility improvement plan. Um, this keeps on coming up in the budget through the departments, um, upgrade the council chambers. Uh, there's different reasons why we. Should be doing that, um, but also. Does it look fine?
It looks fine. Just oil all the seats.
I would tell you this, within five years.
Yeah, within five years, we will need to replace it.
Well, within five years, I mean, it's the point, it's the. The auditorium at Roy High, if you sit on the seat and they fall down, so. So does it hurt to keep it?
Five years.
Yeah, because it's. In five years.
Yeah, and often times.
Yeah.
And we're replacing it next week.
Or even in five years, if if the objective is saying that. We want to possibly update the the city council chambers, we'll assess that in the budget.
Yeah.
And show the council what it would take to do that.
Right.
If we have the money, if we don't have the money, what would it take to do it, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah, and if I can just finish my thought, I was just gonna say too. With things happening with the court system, you are gonna need to upgrade certain things to have a functioning court in that space.
And how much of that, how much of that cost could we defer to the court if we have to upgrade said systems?
It's our costs.
The first, it's still our cost.
Defer cost to the state, that works really well.
Send them a bill.
Yeah. Second objective, establishing a new cemetery. Um, this is something that's already in works that we've been trying to, that we've been pushing for years. Um, we, we don't need to get into the detail of that, but that's still something that we like to continue to strive for.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Then, and then the last, I actually really like this idea. It's a. When you go on six thousand south and the the D R and G trail, we have that bathroom and small parking area. There's a lot of people that utilize that. Four thousand south on the other side of the city, would you like to mimic that?
Is that a lot on a lock system, that one?
What's that?
That bathroom on a lock system, automatic.
That is one of the bathrooms that we do have on the, yeah, it's the newest. Uh, we have, yes.
I I see some benefit in that, but knowing what the previous thing you just talked about that. How do you coordinate all that in there? Maybe. You incorporate, because the cemetery, um, yeah, I won't say too much more, but. You may have the option to coordinate with other amenities in the city. In that location.
Yeah, very true.
I think it's.
I mean.
Discuss them.
At the very least.
Do you like to combine it? And not, and just create the action plan of it with the cemetery or?
I mean, even just, even just establishing a parking lot as a jump point for people to take and, you know, drive their vehicles, jump out. Hit the trail system, go all the way down into Ogden and come back. Even without, you know, restroom facilities. There's value. You don't have to have a bathroom, that's a.
A lot of that assessment can happen when we, if we put something in there, we can assess that added cost to the bathroom. If we're not having the same problems, if the the security systems will be put in place to solve that issue.
When the road ever gets put in. Over the trail, I mean, there's different things.
Yeah.
Good. Brittany says, can we just enhance access to the trail? That wouldn't be really public infrastructure though.
Yeah. Aren't we doing, aren't we enhancing access to the trail with like the development that's going in down there? Anyway. Yeah. All right.
Hey, we good with that filler?
On that one, on one of mine that I sent to you about the fire station and the enterprise, or is that?
Public infrastructure would be, um, if we wanted to put something in about a fire station. And municipal building, things like that into aging infrastructure, I think that would be applicable there.
Yeah, it's a. Whether it be an objective underneath that piece or whatever.
I think, I I would like that in the action plan because it goes more into all infrastructure, not necessarily just. Yeah. I don't know if an enterprise fund would necessarily. Go into public infrastructure, it could be, I guess.
Yeah, when I, when I submitted, I wasn't sure where.
Yeah. Where that fit would be. Any suggestions by the group?
He's talking about the fire.
Yeah, there's, there needs to be a lot of evaluation that goes into that to say, is it self sustaining, things like that that we're working through, so. Thoughts?
It it it's, I mean, it's forty years old and it's, it's doesn't meet any of the current posture or N F A compliance of anything. Separation's not there, you know, so.
Yeah, these were built.
But yeah, it's just, that's a, that's a living quarters thing, and that's, that's a home. You know, they live there a third of their life. And that's, that's basically, uh. Yeah, this one too has to be included, absolutely, I agree.
But also remember, like, this is just planting that seed to have us look into this as well, because. You know, these municipal building, fire station is gonna be.
Public safety building and city.
Yeah.
Parkfield's got a good example of it. They got that really nice fire station. Embedded, okay, even though it's the county's fire station. Embedded with that brand new municipality building, so.
So maybe, maybe a suggestion would be under the goal, oh, I think it's. Or is it one of the, one of the objectives? Of just combining public works with the infrastructure with. You know, all departments as well, not just public works, and building that into the action plan. And not necessarily because, um, that, that uh, objective is pretty vague as it is. The baseline analysis where we are today, create and fund a five year infrastructure improvement plan.
Did you have a under replacing at aging recreation amenities and buildings?
Well, I mean, it is important. We could separate it out, I guess. If each department wants to take their own or combine it into the one.
Well, and that's the thing is, is the develop the capital facility improvement plan. Under the action, that's where we go through and say, what areas within the, within the city do we want to focus on? Municipal building, fire.
Why don't we just change the responsible party to all department heads? Yeah. And then you'll get infrastructure plans from every department.
Right, yeah, what are your infrastructure needs and then we assess. We do a needs assessment, who is, is in the worst criteria. Go from there.
Okay, that's a good one.
All right, that pushes it into work or development and operational excellence.
Um, all right, are we done with that pillar? You guys?
Would that include like the bathrooms and the aquatic center and all those, all those things?
Yeah. Infrastructure, yeah. Not creating, well, it does create new, I guess. All right, the next pillar is workforce development. Operational excellence. Just a couple of goals here, um, a couple of objectives, new objectives as well that we'd like to go over. So the first goal is invest in recruit development and retention of a talented. And committed workforce. Some of the things that we've already talked about. Um, is the employee activities and programs. This would be a correlation of the action plan of the city manager and all department heads. As well as uh, employee retention programs, city manager and department heads would also develop that action plan. Is there any objectives over those two? Okay, the next objective, um, provide programming and services to ensure, ensure our employees' mental health needs are met. Something we are currently working on, um, certain state statutes have accelerated that and we're going a little bit. You know, we're, we're trying to be aggressive in our approach and, and helping the employees out. Um, but we feel like it's important enough that we need to have an action plan and continue that. Uh, that would also be city manager and department heads. Mainly, we do have an E A P system that all employees can partake in. This mental health, um, program that we're doing is only for public safety and. Possibly expanding that or something to address the, the workforce. We can assess that, but. Questions with that?
Okay, that's great.
Foster a workplace with a good work-life balance. That was something that we felt like is a competitive advantage by Roy City that a lot of people. Um, would want to work here, not necessarily for the pay, but for the work-life balance. What we have to offer our employees. The action plan would also be myself and department heads. Okay, the next goal, invest in the recruitment development and retention of a talented, committed workforce. Objective. Wait, that is the same. Um, objective five, support training programs to empower the highest level of service.
I mean.
All right.
We'll start.
Um, here's a big one is, uh. Basically with communication and cur- encourage department leadership to foster and maintain open communication lines. So this is. All of these goal number ones is going to be a collaboration of myself with the department heads. Okay, second goal. Foster public trust through open communication and transparency. So the objective is to establish a suggestion box in the administration ability, building to allow resident feedback, suggestions. To management. So we have similar things like that, but they might not be taken, that people might not be taken very much advantage of. Through the website, but how can we expand that?
I just, you're not talking about put suggestion boxes just only in this building, not like throughout the city. People would just abuse that. Kids would put crap in there and. An email not work?
Email. So email is not anonymous. You would want to, again, you'd probably want to do some type of online form that'd allow for. Somebody to take and submit something anonymously, cuz that's what this is supposed to do. That's why the physical suggestion box, cuz you don't have to sign.
Could only have it like in a city building.
Well, you can do city building, you can do public works. Right.
We do have an employee one as well, like we have one up by the H R department where people can drop off things anonymously.
Sure.
Um, however, I think this is a little bit mixed with the residents as well.
Okay, so this is actually for community outreach.
Yeah.
If it's for community, I would just do the one here somewhere in this building.
Yeah. And, yeah.
If you put it anywhere else, kids are just gonna put stuff in.
And I mean, I I, there's nothing that says a, a citizen can't take and, you know, send you something in the mail. I have a letter that I just got out of my own box that was sent anonymously. So again, we can all give feedback multiple different areas, but.
I think, Mayor, isn't an idea here is also to administrative staff as well?
Yeah, the idea, um, would be is, is that you can look at suggestion box being really two-fold. Yeah, the idea, um, would be is, is that you can look at suggestion box being really two-fold. Typically, there can be a mechanism by which says, I think there's a problem, and, and certainly you have to recognize the people we use as complaint. But you also have both residents and, and employees who may say, I've got a great idea. How can I get that to the city manager? How can I get that to the department head? And so, offering some type of a mechanism by which both the public can provide some input and ideas to, to, uh. To the city manager and department heads, as well as have avenues by which the employees anonymously, obviously, very best. Then I think you open, you close, you really open a, a wonderful, uh, opportunity to communicate on issues. One thing that Matt and I talked about, which is critical, we do not want to circumvent the line of authority. Uh, if an employee has an issue, we certainly want to have them take it up their, their line of authority. But some things, it might just be a suggestion and idea that maybe it's best to send it to the city manager. And let the city manager decide how best to approach it, and so it just opens the line of communication.
So I, I think we go with a physical suggestion box and then one that like somebody can submit online, and we give them the option to submit it anonymously, or they could. And it could easily go out and everybody at the council, had, had everybody at, at the city administration level too.
You okay with that?
And then the second objective, um, develop and establish a new annual citywide survey to collect. Uh, public input on important issues. So we could do this through different ways. Uh, but this is just kind of the seed to plant.
Yeah, what's, what's the hot button issues out in the community?
I figure that, so they come and talk at community council, if they have anything to say, have a comment.
That, that's very, same, same thing, yeah.
Yeah, because I don't know how we could get out a, I mean, survey, you know how expensive those are, I mean, they sell all this one for half price, but.
So we did like a statistical survey versus, this would be, we did something through Weber State that would be kind of like this too. But it's, I guess it's just a way to look differently, through a different lens and seeing what we can come up with. And again, later if people don't like it, we don't do it, so. It's just the idea that we.
You can go the cheap route and just use frigging Survey Monkey, and it costs us a hundred fifty dollars a year. And we can put out as many surveys as we want, and we engage it. Um, and they have to put in like their address and, you know, say that they're a citizen of Roy or whatever. And if they aren't, then we just toss that data out, the system will allow for that.
Um, I would, I would make a suggestion, let's move that toward the administrative services. The legislative department, not necessarily management services. So. On the workforce development, would there be anything else? You would like to see?
What about growth? Workforce development growth, would that be just an action plan under this, or would that be its own objective?
I mean, that, I, I would, I would group that under support training programs to empower the highest level of service, because that's. Growth, because you can get professional growth by going to.
No, I meant growth as in quantity.
Oh, as far as, oh, headcount?
As the population grows and demand grows, we have to, is quite honestly, right? We talk about competent service delivery. And we get a backlog, right, and then you get burned, and so it just becomes us, I, I don't know where.
Goes across the whole. Departments, because with parks. Uh, chief, what about that?
Your objective two for employee growth and retention.
Uh, yeah, as long as we just understand, we're talking about growth as in.
As in quantity, yeah, how are we gonna get more and then keep them as well?
Take care of the growing.
But there's also the, the.
Nothing worse than going into budget, and all department has a right for personnel, and you're fighting over, like, that's, if you have a plan.
Let's jump in the last set of groups. Okay, chart. This one talks about public transportation enhancements, improve traffic flow, suggested we basically add safety to that. Uh, either way, sounds good to me, certainly we can add that to the, uh, to the goal. You okay with this adding safety component to that goal statement?
Safety, also, I don't, I've only noticed it a few places, but we always have to make sure we have trees and shrubs. Cut back where there are stop signs and, I mean, I go into some cities sometimes and I barely see a stop sign, so I almost run it, because the tree is covering it.
Yeah, that's, uh, there's, there's a component in here on objective six that's gonna talk to that very issue. Because that is an important component, but certainly, uh, the goal, providing a safety component, when they bring in to making sure our roads are safe. To the extent that we can provide that, good point. Uh, white and fifty-six hundred, it was stated earlier, we're working that one right now, there's a lot of nuances that are gonna take place between now and twenty twenty-five. As that whole thing evolves, uh, we've only started down that path, you can bet there'll be more to come. Uh, creating and implementing a traffic flow plan that includes the elevation, the evaluation of traffic impacts. Uh, we hadn't even got to that part of the conversation yet, and, and, and certainly if you look at it, um. There's a number of impacts that are already taking place, that, that we have got to find ways by which we can move that. I, I, I will tell you personally, I asked both the mayor of Hooper and the mayor of West Haven to stop growing. And after they stopped laughing, okay, it made very clear that we are going to be between those cities. And by the way, West Haven is expected by twenty fifty, twenty fifty-five, they will be the second largest city, okay, in Weaver County by population. Outrunning Roy City. West Haven is expected to grow that fast.
Oh, I, I thought you said twenty twenty-five.
No, I'm sorry, twenty thirty-five, yeah, twenty thirty-five, twenty forty-five. It's, uh, and you go down there, you're seeing it, uh, they're building, well, you know, it's happening down there. So they're gonna come through Roy, Roy is going to have a lot of jamming, uh, we're already seeing that on thirty-five, you've already seen witness fifty-six.
Yeah, we'll give discount to residents.
We can do that, so we just need to look at the implications of that, okay, public work would be a probably one that can help us to find that a little clearer. Uh, adjust the speed limits on city on streets, I think we talked about this one time, council, uh, today the law has been changed. Uh, was changed last year, that says the city council can basically adjust city street speed limits, do not need a traffic study, that's what the law says. And so you go, if you want to see something interesting, read the transportation plan. The transportation plan does talk about specific streets changing those speed limits. And interesting enough, they have not been changed. But you as a city council could go.
No more change to go up.
Yes, actually, all of them.
All of them are up.
Fifty-six hundred.
Want to light a fire under somebody.
That's the reason.
Increase the speed limit at the lower part of six thousand.
I agree, I agree, but interesting enough, they've already started that, they're already running fast on six thousand, okay, a lot faster than twenty-five. But that's a city council issue, that's the reason why we're asking you to look at that.
So I have a question, you know that retention pond that's below the by dock?
Yes.
So I know that they're gonna have to take those houses out north of them, right, still? Oh, they don't have to now?
No.
Oh, because they were, because I have a friend that lives right there, and she was told that they were gonna have to make that retention.
Under the study, there were three homes on the north side of that retention pond that were targeted. In large part because U dot basically under the study said, we need to extend, okay, that retention base. They don't have to do that.
Do they know that, those people?
Uh, they should know it because they didn't get. Houses purchased or being part of that free right away acquisition.
I need to tell her, because, okay.
The study showed. It's on the north side of the by dock.
Got those houses right there, right next to her.
U dot doesn't necessarily go out and say, we're not purchasing your house and. Because they might need to for some reason later too.
Was told she had two years, and her husband have a job where he was not getting paid. And so she said, we gotta get him a good paying job so we can get along, and now I can go tell her you want to do that now.
Here's what I would do, uh, and, and you're in a perfect position to do that, the sixth of June. At five o'clock in the Hope Center.
Yes.
While we're in city council meeting, they need to be in Hope Center. They talk, Matt, I've looked over and over again where they are on the current data, the visuals we have access to, you and I. And those properties are not in there. There's properties on the north side that are impacted, but they're just taking the fronts of them, they're not basically taking houses on the north side for the most part.
And are the houses that aren't tore down yet, or they're still negotiating, and they just?
Still negotiations, some have already been purchased, some have asked, request to actually stay in the house until their house is done. Uh, but that, those deadlines are coming to an end, what we're expecting to see, at least from all the information I'm reading from U dot. And the data we have access to, uh, they're almost done, the ones that are still in questions is the Chateau. Condos, those are now, it's still in negotiation, so that'll still be worked, uh, but everything east of there is pretty well all been purchased. Uh, and have, most of them have been knocked down.
Thinking of taking condos out of Chateau Park, are they just gonna take their parking spots and shorten up there?
This is very com- this is, this is very confidential. Confidential, yeah, here we go. It's a future this unfolding. But I will tell you, it's still in the work, okay, it really is. But, but I want to go back to the speed limit, are you guys okay with the idea of them basically, you need to look and see what you want to do about speed, speed limits in the city? Certainly you can do a traffic study, it doesn't say you can't do that, the law says you don't have to have that to make a change, think about that. Are you okay with this?
Yeah, everything else is good.
Yeah, okay, next chart. Okay, um, improve the traffic flow, um. Okay, so we're basically still on the same goal, we got an objective for white thirty-five hundred west to reduce traffic congestion. I'm gonna tell you, okay, the plan is right now, in large part because the legislators did. Uh, we can expect in the spring to more likely have the West Davis Corridor done. They're going to extend it from where it's at right now, where they planned to it up to eighteen hundred, they approved that. But the reality is, is that they're projecting they will have the West Davis Corridor done. By the spring of next year. At the same time next year, they got funding to finish the widening from on two thousand west. In Davis County, to widen that all the way to eighteen hundred. So everything that you see down by the Smith Store, they're gonna widen that all the way up to eighteen hundred. But it stops there, it doesn't go from two thousand west into thirty-five hundred west. And it's not projected today until twenty twenty-nine, that's the schedule. So what does that mean? I'm telling you, you can quote me, okay? I don't like traveling in Davis County on certain times of the day, the, the congestion in Leighton on I fifteen and Caseville is brutal. As soon as U dot finishes that West Days, West Davis Corridor. And you now can access it, the two main roads that's going to access is coming out of West Weaver is thirty-five hundred and forty-three hundred. They are going to be very popular, and they're going to be, everybody's gonna say, I'm not taking I fifteen, I'm gonna take the lower road. And they're gonna run out there, thirty-five hundred is gonna become a parking lot, it is already, it's gonna get worse. We really need to figure out how to approach that, and maybe as part of the action plan, figure out a way to see if we can expedite that. To get that up from twenty twenty-nine.
We just mayor.
Yeah, that's how you do it, I hate to say it, but legislation is how you make that work. It's in the schedule, it's in the plan, it will happen twenty twenty-nine, if you want to bring it up, we gotta do it something. You okay with allowing us now to work that, and, and if the answer is, public work says, we need to have this more of a legislative issue, then we'll work the legislative component to this. But it, but it's gotta happen, trust me. Randy, we put an idea on the table that says, let's talk about transferring four thousand, it's up there, we can certainly think about going in the future. And that's gonna be really, really, really critical to this group, when you finalize and approve the stationary plan that's coming to you in June. You need to read that plan, of what's planned on the stationary plan and what we've got going there. Four thousand is gonna become a problem, trust me. So, and I'm okay with that, if you want to change the wording on that, or consider versus transfer, uh, we can certainly look at some options.
Think you don't would want to take.
Because they own the lower half of it already.
Exactly.
Doesn't have an overpass.
Well, but that's the thing is.
But it's also a main corridor to a transportation hub.
It could be because of the airport and what they have.
The station, you got the train station there.
I, I, I will tell you, here's how it comes down, the law basically says, the legislators have to put it in there. And the legislator's gotta be willing to transfer it.
Because it goes nowhere.
It goes on nineteen, but.
But it's your access to the train station.
That's best to the train, and to be honest with you, if you read the Ogden Airport Plan, it's gonna be the main access to the Ogden Airport. That's what they're playing plans for.
Yeah, because the entrance to the airport will be at four thousand.
This one's political, so you okay, city council, you gotta work this politically, okay? And then to your point, Anne, keep trees, shrubs, and foliage trimmed to stop signs, intersections. Everything you're saying there, when you made that make sense, the question is, is that a park and recreation, Ross, or is that a public works responsibility? You? Okay, we okay with everything on this page? You okay?
Yeah, that looks fantastic.
Okay, objective goal, establishing repair sidewalks, the idea here was to be improved the sidewalk availability. We still have a number of places that do not have sidewalks in the city. And then look for ways by which we can improve the, prove the repair of those sidewalks. You okay with those? Okay. Then that's a public work requirement, Kurt. Okay, public transportation goal three, promote and development of action, active transportation trails. Determine how Roy City can help in the development enhancement of a three-gate trail system located on the east side of the city. Uh, I will tell you, the county has already called a meeting on that, uh, they're pushing that one hard. Uh, MIDA, if you're not familiar with the MIDA organization, they got four million dollars from, uh, federal funding. To enhance the trail once, uh, U dot buys that rail line from U, Union Pacific. So we're gonna see a lot of changes up there. Trust me with this comment, that's a valuable tool, if right behind the proposed Royce development. That's going in there, what Woodbury's proposing, they'll be able to drop right onto that trail, and with everything there, be able to move literally, uh. Or better word, north and south. Okay? Are you okay with me going ahead and just basically working that piece of it? Determine other areas and opportunities exist to establish new trails. We won't know exactly what the proposal is until we see the final layout, but the fact of the matter is, is U dot is gonna put a nice trail system. Running east and west down fifty-six hundred, it's in the transportation plan to do that, and they're talking about that, I'm just looking for the design. If you see the design that Matt and I get in access to, it's in there, a nice trail, ten-foot wide. Trail, road, whatever, sidewalk, whatever it is. So the point here is, is that, do you, what do you want to do with it, you want to look at other trail opportunities in Roy? If you do, council. Are you willing to take on an action to look for other possibilities? And by the way, let me make it clear, uh, legislators gave, uh, U dot forty-six million dollars this year. In legislation, forty-six, I think is the number, chief, uh, to do active transportation trails. That's a, that's a lot of money, never seen anything like that before.
So when they do fifty-six hundred, are they gonna have a nice trail, bring stuff down fifty-six hundred to?
All the way down the, the south side. Yep. Now, here's one, this one is one we haven't talked about, but we want to throw it in there to consider. Place a pedestrian bridge on the western rail trail and over the railroad. Place a pedestrian bridge on the western rail trail and over the railroad tracks south of four thousand to allow ex- easy access to the front runner station. There was a long range plan, it was scheduled to come up about twenty thirty-eight. But the idea there was, um, and I've seen the, I've seen the plans. But the idea was, is to try to find a way to get the people who are on the west side of the tracks safely to the train station. And this was the idea.
This kind of like. On forty-four hundred. That little. That they make a little trail thing over there.
There was also one that was there and in the long range plan. This one was more specific because it took them off the rail trail, western rail trail, it brought them over the tracks and dropped them on to the train station. Are we okay? Now, this is one that's not going to happen in, in five years. It sets the seed, but I will tell you, there could be federal funding available to pay for something like this, this, this is big thing.
But if we go back to like, if we're gonna get four thousand south to UDOT, would that not become on four thousand south UDOT responsibility? So would it not behoove us to push it, say, to like forty-eight hundred because, or down in that area? Um, so that way you would basically, if you say as an example, if you're on the far. Uh, south end of Roy, you could legitimately start at six thousand and ride a bike all the way to the front runner station. Um, and have easy access where you don't have to stop. Um, and it gets you there faster.
It, it's the endpoint, the intent with this is, where's the endpoint in terms of where do you want it to drop into Roy?
Right.
The idea about providing it as easy access to the front runner station. Because there's a lot of momentum about trying to find about getting ridership with UTA to put that. Putting the front runner station in the equation, I think will be much easier to convince, it's kinda like. Uh, were you involved at all with the conversations that took place with Ogden about getting the rapid transit, bus transit system? What made that work for them is the fact is, is they went up there and they basically tied the university into it. And they put the hospital into it too, I believe, but that university and connecting the rail lane system, okay, downtown to the front runner, to the university, just sucked in federal funding. That's, and so the idea would be is, how can we zip this, get this. Bridge, for better word, and do it, and, and the idea was the front runner station may be the catalyst that helps make that happen.
And I, again, I guess I'm, maybe I'm not articulating that correctly. Because what we're saying is we would take and put a bridge from where the trail ends over the train tracks. Into.
Where, where it actually not ends, but where it comes across that west side, yeah. Just be a little spur off, off the trail that drops over the top of the railroad station or, or the train station. Uh, I just think there's an incredible hazard at this moment for people to access the, the train station at this moment, walking on four thousand. Uh, and I think that was the original premise. Are you okay with that? Let's see where it goes, okay, at least in the conversation. We'll work with Public Works on that, chart. We're getting done here, hold on, establish a water conservation plan, now we're talking about environment stewardship. Uh, the flip your strip program for existing developments, uh, existing developments, this thing is evolving. Uh, Glenda, you probably know better than anybody how much we're now seeing coming out of the latest legislation and the funding. That it's not flip your strip anymore, it's about almost whatever you wanna do in terms of any type of water conservation programs. And they are looking at lots of options. Uh, take out your front yard if you want.
More and more people, I just drove by a couple of them today, they're pulling out their front yard and putting in rock and I.
Marge, Marge was even just telling me that, yeah, she's going zero escape in her front yard. So people are doing it.
This probably needs to be adapted to the current momentum, but it's bigger than just that.
Yeah.
Uh, for existing facilities, and this one talks about futures. Maybe if you're okay with this, maybe we can consolidate this into one objective. And expand this a little bit broader to the latest legislation that's opening up a lot of doors in terms of helping us to deal with water conservation. You okay with that?
Yeah.
We'll consolidate those. I, I will tell you, this one, uh, Brody, you gotta watch. Because this is a mandate that's been put out there by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, we have to have a water conservation plan in our general plan, okay? That also includes an implementation strategy as well. Are you okay with this to go forward? Chart, we'll consolidate the top two, we're getting there, almost done. Move towards emission, carbon emission reduction operations. Uh, Public Works has already got some, uh, grants they're working towards to basically through a reduction of, uh. A CMA, I don't know, CMAQ, I'm trying to go through what that all stands for, C, C-MAC.
C-MAC.
Yeah. Anyway, they're, they're moving through the system, okay, about that, but here's the point. The point would be is, is that, uh, you're gonna have to get electric vehicles. Okay? Major, major auto, develop auto dealers, uh, manufacturers are gonna get out of that. I just heard today that Honda, uh, I think next year or the year after will no longer make gasoline engines for lawnmowers. You imagine Honda, it lasts forever.
It's already buying gas.
You can't buy them, they're all going, they're going battery.
Oh, I, I hate my battery one, I might, I gave it to my son, it doesn't suck hard enough.
Well, here's my point.
The lawn mower.
I, I understand, all I'm saying is that there's transition. Roy City has got to basically start getting itself equipped, we were expecting twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine to get these in. If he can get these in, Public Works, then we should have electric, uh, charging stations at the administration building. We can debate whether they're going on the, on the south side or the north side, I personally don't care. Uh, but I will tell you, the way the proposal was packaged, they'd be available for public use. Even though my intent, when we first brought this conversation up, you gotta start transitioning over to electric vehicles, not everything, but some. And I always thought those to be just simply used by.
So was that, yeah, like you put a credit card in or something to charge.
Might be.
Free, right?
See how that unfolds, are you okay with moving in that direction? What about solar panels? Okay? Okay?
With solar panels, we can't have a lot of them, because then what about the air?
Ah, now you're start talking about how this all has to be integrated.
Yeah, ask people that had solar panels this winter, that compiled snow on top, moved, broke tons of panels.
Oh, did it?
Do that.
They come to my house all the time, I'm like, no thanks.
Okay. Chemical plume, Walt spent a lot of time on this one.
Generated, I pay ten bucks.
That chemical plume that's sitting on the south side of Roy City will be there longer than we live. There isn't a person in this room that's gonna live long, not even you, okay? It's gonna live, be around when that thing is done. It will not be done for at least a few generations. This is about public awareness, there's over a hundred residents in Roy City today that will not allow. The air force to go in their homes to check and see if they're being contaminated. It appalls me. All I can say to you is this, we gotta keep the awareness going, that's, that's the facts, you okay with that? That's all we can do, we cannot fix the chemical plume, but we can bring awareness to the fact, the fact that it exists.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You okay, chart? We're almost there. Remote recycling programs. Increased participation in waste management recycling program. Do you wanna continue? Do you wanna have this as a five-year strategic plan?
For discussion, but not me and I.
Whatever you like. Should we keep it in or take it out?
Keep it.
Okay. Uh, the management services department will be responsible to manage that, we'll need an action plan of how we can get the participation rate up in terms of how we do recycling. You okay with that? We'll let them work out the action plan. Establish more green dumpster days at the Public Works facility, we do four weeks a year. Uh, plus what the youth will do in August, do we want to do, they wanna consider anymore?
I don't know, Ross, anything?
I don't know, because it's same people using it, they keep all their stuff there and they're waiting.
This goes back into like, uh, the community volunteerism, if we had, you know, a spring cleanup, a fall clean.
So I'll just, I'll just tell you, from the things that we've gotten. Like, as far as like the people who have contacted me, we've had a few that are very anxious and just wanna help people. Most people call and say, where's my dumpster, I basically want the city to pay for my cleanup.
On the flip side.
Which is fine, let's do this, but then you're gonna have to just give us a whole bunch more money.
Yeah, well, on the flip side, because when I was thinking about when we had like the four weeks, if I personally, I didn't own a flatbed trailer. But if I did own a flatbed trailer, I would say, hey, neighbors, if you have stuff that you want to haul away, come toss it on my flatbed trailer.
Right.
I'll secure it and then I'll take it down to, to Public Works during that four week period. And so if we can get more people in the community to volunteer to do those types of.
Yeah, and I, and that's fine, it's just like, that is what we're kind of running into on that side is, that's great, who's paying for it?
Maybe if we can keep it a little bit more generalized and not saying, add more days, but come up with alternatives. Kinda like the dumpster passes, because they were very effective, that they could just go to the dump. And it's not the same ten people using them, or like Randy is suggesting. Does it really need to be during that time period? If a community is helping each other out and Randy's putting on the flatbed, can we provide a service for them when it's? We even provide like the dump passes for that, if somebody, yeah, I mean, that's a bit, yeah. But not, not to just put in the five-year strategic plan saying, we're just gonna add more days, be more generalized to come up with more creative ways to address the issue.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Rephrasing this more of a general perspective?
I think, yeah, because I think some creative ideas of how to do that would help me specifically on the things we're doing because.
Okay, that's, we'll push for that, bring it back to you, look at it, last comment, we're almost there. Uh, this one came out of the general plan, the last one we got on the table. Establish community rest, forestation program in the city parks. And lands, objective through volunteer efforts, increase the number of trees by ten percent within our parks and public lands.
Yeah, I wanna increase the number.
I like it.
I wanna tear down all the.
Yeah.
So many.
There's, walked through, remember Russell the other night, there's a ton of dead ones.
Just right outside here.
It'll be okay, we can certainly debate about whether ten percent's adequate when we get to the finals, but if you're okay with going ahead and pressing forward, we'll come in with a plan. We'll help the Parks and Recreation Director.
It was ten years ago, so maybe we can find some one on's now.
Get it done, yeah, get it going, okay, we'll make that happen, we'll modify objective two, last chart. All action plans are due back to the city manager by the thirtieth of June. You okay with that?
Fantastic.
Okay, uh, we'll get these out to you and then once we're, uh, back, uh, we get these out, we'll get the feedback, we'll get this back in. Then, uh, you guys will fill in those action plans where you got the assignment, last chart. Here's what's going to happen, so we know what the last phase. Prior to the third and last work session, update the plans, different making we agreed to in this session. Each organization that has an objective ownership, develop action plans and timetables. Update plans for the third work sessions and in the work, the final work session, what we'll do, we'll make the adjustments. We'll finalize the progressing report in terms of how we're report back, maybe once quarter, maybe once or twice a year. Comes back to the city council, how we're progressing in terms of the elements of the action plan. And determine how we integrate updates, there may be new things you wanna put in, there may be some other things that we, we should basically reevaluate, take out. We'll final, finalize those issues when we meet again after we get the action plans. Any questions or comments? Perfect, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, Joe. Do I have a second?
All second.
Thank you, Randy, all in favor?
Hard.
Any opposed hearing them, we are adjourned. Brittany, thank you for putting this whole thing together.
It's leaving every light on in the room. So like, oh, your, my power bill's thirty ninety, the official one is seventy-one, and we have like six and two.
Well, I did too, I've got like all.